We have Mike, Mr. Michael Lucino with us for the presentation tonight on the ability to stream meetings.
Yes, sir. Is there a fight standing here?
Sure.
First, Baron Council, Mr. Reed, thank you for inviting me to come forward and do a presentation on Swaggin', which is what we do in a way of streaming. I'm just gonna give a short, hard core little overview on our company, services that we offer, take you out to some live sites, show you how other jurisdictions are using our technology, and more importantly, just answering questions anyone has on our services. First of all, we have been doing this since 2003 with a focus on government. We've worked with municipalities, school districts, counties, state agencies, and state legislatures throughout the US. And a few years ago, started doing the same thing in Canada as well. We have a very unique business model in this space in that we actually take on a labor component on behalf of our clients. I'll explain that a little bit more detail in a second. But because we chose that model, we also have our own content and our own network throughout the US and Canada. So instead of engaging a third party, such as Amazon, Akmon, some of the others out there, we actually have our own network throughout the US that we use for our clients. We get involved in three primary areas. The first and most popular is our streaming, which we refer to as hands-free, because from a staff perspective, once we're deployed, there's really little to nothing for staff to have to do in a way of managing the streaming solution. It's a fully hosted solution, so the storage is on Swaggin'. The content obviously retains ownership and copyright to the city. And then the bandwidth is on us as well, so the public can hit in our network whenever they want to watch it live or on demand media. For those jurisdictions that don't have camera systems, we do offer one, though we're camera gnostic. So if we can get audio and video feed, we're good to go. But we do have a very unique camera system in this market as well, and then we took the same hands-free model that we developed for streaming and applied it on the camera side, which simply means we have staff in Dallas where we're based that will go into a camera system and control all the cameras and thereby do the production as well as the streaming for our clients. Everything we've done is built with open source technology, so if there's applications that the city has, or either now or in the future where it makes sense to integrate the two, we can easily do so. And this typically comes into play with the agenda management systems. And so with the agenda management systems, we've integrated a number of them out there in the marketplace now. The way the hands-free streaming works is we have staff again in Dallas that prior to the meeting, to keep post your meetings in advance of the meeting, they will grab that agenda off your website typically or it's emailed to them. Once the meeting starts streaming live, that's a staff member will remote in to an onsite encoder, basically a streaming server if you will. And they will be able to download one hour chunks of the meeting as it's progressing. And they'll create index points within that video file each time the mayor brings a new item to the table for discussion or action, and marry that with the appropriate agenda item and the text of that agenda title. The power of that obviously is most people, though you may have some that want to watch the whole meeting, most don't. They want to watch one or two very important agenda items for them. This allows them to go on, on demand, watch the meeting at their convenience, click on the agenda item that they're interested in, go right to it. Same thing for staff, if they're coming back and researching an older meeting in the archives, they'll be able to do the same thing as well, report back or do whatever they do in their research. In addition to that, if the city has any, what I call specialty content or non-meeting content such as PSAs, if the mayor does a state of the city address, you know, economic development tourism type videos, we're happy to host those in addition to your meeting content as well. And we can also integrate social media such as Facebook and Twitter into the streaming player. The most important thing is there's no software that we deploy, so there's nothing for staff to have to learn because we're doing it all for you, and more importantly, no training cost associated with our solution. With the camera system I mentioned before, there's a wide variety of different applications or camera systems that you can utilize in this case. Ours engages typically three hand tilt zoom cameras. Each can have up to ten user defined presets, so inclusive of the mayor, each of council members, staff members, speaker podium. We can also take a direct feed from a presentation computer for hard points or site plans that may be shown to the council. And basically, the director that's dedicated to that meeting is toggling between those presets and wide shots as the basically following the flow of the meeting. So their act is that they're sitting right here onsite, they just have to be in Dallas switching the cameras and thereby doing the production. Before I go into some live sites, any questions thus far? That was kind of pretty high level, but any questions thus far? Yes, sir.
You mentioned you have a director sitting in Dallas, but that's at the high end of your options.
That's correct. I'll show you an alternative to that during the segment. So let me jump to some live sites here. This is the city of Jackson, here in the city. We've been streaming with them for a couple of years now. This is their website. What we do as part of deployment is create a linking code that creates an iframe here that you see here where all the content or access to the content resides. And so if I want to go to see what's live right now, if there's a meeting there or not, I just go to the live tab. So it looks like they're having some sort of video presentation. I'm just gonna mute this here. This is an example of the live stream, so we're streaming their meeting or their cable channel or whatever they may have, 24 sub. And so each, anytime there's a meeting happening around time, the audience or through the internet can watch that meeting as well from home. And then dark eyes begin from left to right. These tabs are configurable. If I want to go in and see a council meeting, I just click on the meeting I want to watch. Now moving from actually the city of Jackson's website to Swaggin's network. But the branding is that still the city. So we build as part of deployment, designing build a player that will mimic the look and feel of their website. And this allows the public to be able to go in and watch whatever they want as part of that meeting. So you'll see over to the right, an agenda that is indexed, and this is our staff doing it. So if I want to go in and see this ordinance, I just simply click on that, and I go right to that part of the meeting. This is available within one to three hours after the meeting is adjourned. So once your meeting is adjourned, it lasts until nine or 10 o'clock at night by one or two in the morning, it's out there that you watch on demand. You'll see a full agenda tab over here, this is simply is where we take the full agenda, I think Jackson puts their full package here as a menu. But we just take the agenda, just post it to your website with all the detail and put it there. And you'll see a share tab that allows the public or staff to share a link of this meeting or guide them with other people. So if there's a zoning case that may be important to a neighborhood, they can share it among themselves and see how we all can discuss that zoning case. There's also a feature that can be enabled or disabled at the city's wishes, and that is the ability for anyone to download a full video file of the meeting right to their hard drive. And that can be enabled or disabled as I said. And then I want to jump on real quick to Morrisville, North Carolina, which has our camera system. Jackson actually had a camera system when they started streaming with us. And so on this one, it's very similar from the perspective of Jackson with the index agenda on the right. But every time there's a camera switching, it's actually one of our staff that is doing the switching from Dallas. And so here you have a close-up of the mayor, so they're just following the flow of the meeting again as it goes on. I think here it's a little slow right now. And of course, I have the share tab here, and this is where we can integrate social media. This is always from the perspective of viewer. Since I don't have the city's opposite credentials to your Facebook, if I hit Facebook, it's gonna open up my personal Facebook, create a link of the meeting, and then I can put whatever comment I want. Same thing for the city, if you all want to promote some discussion of a new road or new park or something, you can simply put that on Facebook and make some comments about it as well. And same thing with Twitter in addition to Facebook. And again, the switching of the cameras is done by our staff in Dallas. And the one last one I want to show you is kind of alternative to this camera setup. And this has been popular especially with the smaller jurisdictions and some of the counties that we do business with, where we just installed two cameras with picture and picture hardware and software. And so one camera is fixed on the speaker podium in the lower right-hand corner, and the other one on the full dais, in this case, Fisher's Court in recent county. And again, it allows the viewer kind of get a good synopsis of what's going on with the meeting, of being able to see the dais as well as anyone that may be presenting to the council. And so I know that was fairly fast, but...
So those two pictures stay on there all the time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If I go in, if I drop down and see that there's someone that comes up to the speaker podium, you'll see, you'll have that shot there. Any other question? We have to share those things.
If we were to adopt something like this, then the person on computer could simply go to the city's website, click on the link, and then from that point on, they're using your bandwidth, not the city's bandwidth.
That's correct.
And they can use the, their desktop, they can use their phone, they can use whatever media they've got, right?
Yeah, we use multiple formats, so whether someone's using an Android phone, iPhone, tablet of some sort, Mac, PC, it's all automatic.
Anybody have any firms?
If we were to go to something like this, you would have one camera in the back, basically this will get everybody in up here, am I correct? And then you probably have one camera over here facing across the podium and seeing the attorney.
We typically try and do, you know, left or right behind the dais so we're able to capture the speaker podium. Even though there are pantiles zoom cameras, they're fixed on a particular location such as the speaker podium. That way, as your staff comes around to give a presentation or a citizen addresses the council, they'll be able to see them in this little right-hand corner. So you'll see a little bit of that table part in the background, the camera set over here. But we try and focus on the speaker podium so that you can understand exactly what's going on as far as addressing the council.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mike, thank you for coming. That was a very good report. Welcome back, Ronald Jones, he's been on extended medical leave and we've missed him, he's here with us tonight. Rob, thank you very much. We'd like to have you back. And he lost weight too while he was on, so we're all kind of mad at him about that. I'm hoping that that's just about us up here, but we're happy. Well, we're jealous. Okay, Hancock County Solid Waste Authority, the Hancock County Solid Waste Authority has been requested to amend the county's solid waste management plan to allow a medical waste facility to be included as a need for the county. A company, Trash Doctors, has applied to locate a medical waste facility at the Port Banjo Industrial Park. At the last meeting of the Solid Waste Authority, I requested, I requested that their request be taken to allow this council to let me know their position. Most of the people on there are mayors or council persons or aldermen, and I work for y'all. And as you're appointing here, I felt like y'all ought to have some input in this. The Hancock County Port Harbor Commission has issued a letter of endorsement to the authority. I've asked several questions about the operations of Trash Doctors and have subsequently been invited to tour the facility with the attorney for the authority next week. I will inform, I will forward the information I have to you for review and provide you with all of my observations shortly after the tour. Under Public Works, Attorney and Manager Project, we received three bids and a successful bidder is under the estimated budget to construct the project. The loan bid is from Smith Contractors in the amount of $68,651.50 and is on your agenda for approval tonight. Between this improvement and the addition of Veterans Drive, this council will have made significant strides in easing traffic congestion and setting the stage for additional commercial development in our community. The Public Works crews have been busy keeping the grass dry, trash picked up, and continuing to work with street drainage improvements. Recently, crews have taken on some beavers that are trying to dam up the downstream drainage at the Miller pad pond. The Beaver Dam was destroyed only to be rebuilt in less than two weeks. We may need a local trapper to help remove nature's busiest little engineers. Dunhead Drive East Drainage, Pickering Engineering reports that the plans are 95% complete for the project. I will share the plans with you as soon as I receive them. Additionally, Pickering reports that a survey is ongoing on the drainage basin study that includes the detention pond adjacent to the Miller residence. Comey Drive Drainage, Notice to Proceed was issued on April 5th. Kanichi Engineering is reviewing contractor submissions and coordinating material delivery of the sheet pile wall systems, which should be done next week. Nearly all rights of entries have been obtained for Section A, which is a section between Calhoun and Concord, Comey Drive, Anella Street, and Apple La Haba Road. How's that for it? Public Safety. In March, the Donovan Air Police Department made 170 traffic stops, issued 39 traffic citations, served four warrants, and made 11 arrests. They also assisted 11 motorists, responded to 25 salarms, and worked 10 accidents. Police also responded to 22 calls and animal problems, 36 suspicious persons and vehicles, stopped two drunk drivers, and four reckless drivers. Copies of the complete report are available by request. Ungrants, the fitness trail is nearing completion. The recent rains caused the engineer of the sites to recommend a change directive to change from asphalt to concrete on that last leg, and they thought that the concrete would hold up better against possible erosion from future rain events. And that particular area where they put the concrete is one of the areas where the water seems to run to. In an effort to reduce siltation at the catch basin, a decision was made to lay sod to protect the topsoil faster than seeding will do. We'll be ordering benches and waste receptacles later this week from the City Prison Industries. I will let you know when the facility is completed. It's very close. Safe routes to school project, the field review was completed by MDOT last week with MSED personnel. That's the site that's engineering from. Many of you have either saw firsthand or heard about the group of people standing at the intersection of Monaloa and Golf Club Drive, staring at the steep angled driveways and scratching their heads trying to find a solution to keeping the slope of the sidewalk within ADA requirements and leaving the homeowners with a driveway at least as good or better than their current driveway. After a considerable amount of time and brainstorming by the transportation engineers, it was decided that the sidewalk should cross the street at this intersection and go down the west side of Golf Club Drive to the golf cart crossing, and then cross back to the east side of Golf Park, Golf Club Drive. The sites is developing new plans to reflect the changes and addition of traffic control devices. I have sent letters to the affected property owners about the proposed plans. All plan changes will come to the council for review and approval before asking for permission to advertise the project for construction. Lighting of the interchange, the field review was also held last week by MDOT along with Pickering Engineering personnel. And this appears to be an uncomplicated project. Completion should be by this fall. You may have noticed some MDOT folks with various instruments around the interchange. Preliminary engineering has been done on those modifications to the interchange. The improvements may take up to two years to complete, but the process has started. Mr. Farah at Pickering has kept this project on MDOT's radar screen, and I'm glad to see this coming to fruition. The kayak launches were out to bid to the deadline for submission of April 27th. As today, Jason Kanichi tells me, we have six prospective bidders. This will be for the launches at Value Drive and Vault Circle. Tidlands Grant, Department of Marine Resources notified us last week that every Tidlands grant awarded in FY17 would be cut by 50% due to their funding reduction, leaving us with $102,333. The FY17 project was to construct a birdie deck and kayak launch on Montjoy Creek near Devil's Elbow, which the award was originally $204,606. The award did not include funding for the road to get the new, to get to the new amenities and associated parking lot, which was $195,714.75. Consequently, with the additional reduction of 50%, after consulting with the engineer, Mr. Kanichi, we are recommending that this money now be applied to the restoration of Devil's Elbow. We may need to combine this award with the future FY18 Tidlands allocation to properly accomplish the needed restoration of Devil's Elbow. The amended agreement and the next grant application will be brought back to the council for approval. The grant brochure has been received, to be printed and folded, and we have 5,000 of them in the office, and they are ready for distribution. If you don't have any questions, I will conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
I have a few questions.
Arm it, please proceed.
The benches and the waste cans for the fitness trail here at City Hall, are those being paid separate from the contract?
Yes, like the equipment.
So they're being purchased separate in addition?
Right.
The change...
Out of the city's budget.
Out of the city's funds.
Right.
Um, also on the fitness trail out here, you mentioned the change directive, changing asphalt to concrete and adding sod. Is this a cost additive or where's the funds coming for that?
No cost, no cost additive, same, same dollars.
Um, can I get a status update on this, the signs for Bogey Drive? I know we mentioned this at the last meeting.
Sure did. I talked to Bridget Sullivan today, and he told me that you had talked to him about the signs as well. We've got some concern about the authority for us to put those signs up. We'll leave the council and see what we can and can't do since this is underneath the power lines, they own the property. They've given us an easement to put the road in, but until we start construction, I don't know that we have a whole lot of authority there to limit access to it. I think that's their call to do that, but I want to get within legal counsel and see what we can do.
Could we please look at that, because we're keeping our police pretty busy running ATVs off, and they need to be doing other things. I think if it was posted, it probably would help. Um, last item, the parking ordinance, where are we with that?
We probably need to bring it back up and put it on the agenda. I think everyone's in agreement that we ironed out the difficulty, we just need to bring it back up.
We had drafted a ordinance a while, a while back, and there was some discussion, disagreement as far as how it should read and the restrictions. We probably need to get a copy of that back out to the council members and let y'all look at it, and if you got any input, let us know, and we'll go back on the agenda.
So it's been revised from the original, and we probably need to look at it. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you all very much. We had an amended or corrected settlement. Somebody move to a room. Um, has anybody else to address the council agenda?
Um, the agenda item that was the most, two people signed up to address the council. Um, and then I have Shari Miller, and I'm not sure what she signed up to address the council regarding. Does this, does it go up?
Y'all removed that agenda item?
Yes.
What was her name?
That's kind of what I thought. That was convenient.
Ms. Miller, please. Go ahead.
Um, I was suggesting a chemical because you guys did, um, that's what I believe, for a surface water management issue that drains over 437 acres of habitat. Um, I want to thank Mr. Sullivan because he has been helping around it. And, um, the thing is, I've spoken to the engineer and I've spoken to the surveyor, and this will help the surveyor make better lines to best serve our city without spending extra money. These are, um, 2012, the city ordinance, and 2013, Rose Drainage, that I've been addressing for many years. Some of you have been in my home many times. Um, I had a meeting in my home, and luckily Derek helped me not lead a quorum in my home. But, um, Mr. Wilbright came because he was the one, when we had our little meeting here, that showed the most interest, and I appreciate that. Um, just trying to say within the rules, and I'm just wanting to tell the board, I really appreciate all you've done to address this issue. I've watched it compromise for at least 10 years. Um, I used to look through tadpoles and minnows in Park and Park in Long Beach. My kids never bought that. Y'all are making it work. I'm really proud of y'all's investments, and I'm really thankful. And I appreciate you being here, finally.
Thank you very much. Do you want to just handle the other two there at the end? Please proceed.
Um, go ahead, David. Mr. Peter Higgins, Curbside Recycling?
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Higgins. I'm a homeowner here, diamond head for more than 20 years. And I'm here tonight to ask, when will we start curbside recycling again? I think it's just, it's a hallmark of a responsible community to have a really active recycling program. And I'd even like you to consider perhaps making it mandatory after, say, two to three years. It's just that important.
As the city manager briefly, did you speak about that today or was that two months ago? It's, it's not for bid right now. We, we, we're taking bids on curbside recycling now through the Solid Waste Authority.
The bid can be opened up on May 5th, in the bid, the bid's reopened May 5th in Lake St. Louis, uh, in their city council.
At the Hancock County Solid Waste Authority?
Yes, thank you. And we meet at 4:30 on the, so if you'd like to attend, we'll definitely be in public government.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, we started it, so let's just finish it.
Peter Higgins?
Well, Peter Higgins, thank you for allowing me to speak. You took out the agenda, but I am, I'm here talking to the leaders. I would like to see, they talked to me about it. We had a little meeting about it yesterday about what happened with the ethics committee. I feel that the ethics committee, you guys have slapped on a hand for the four who were in this meeting here at City Hall. There's no reason to appeal it. It was a slap on the hand. And to waste city money by using the city attorney to appeal this, it's going to be even more money when we already have this in the way. Because the city has already seen a blue circle black eye because of this. To carry on further, I think would be frivolous. And if you do decide to vote on this, I'm wondering, would the council members that were involved in this be recused from the voting? Because would they be voting for the constituents, or would they be voting for themselves? I think that they should at least get out into the community, talk to their constituents, find out what their constituents want. Because I know for our part of the street and our ward, we don't want to see representation. We think that you guys had your hand slapped, there was no firing, there was no anything else except please don't do it again, or we will find you. So let's leave the dogs lying, let them go. Thank you very much.
He's so childish.
Thank you, I'm pleased to speak. I'm not able to hear everything he said, but I pretty much agree with most of it. One thing I would caution people to, I'm glad with the Director of FBI, New Orleans Bureau, probably years back, discuss the slippery slope of ethics problems. And failure to deal with this problem, it will take people down the road with criminal law enforcement. When you do things like a council where you're voting to provide representation for people in front of ethics meetings and to get out of other law enforcement activities that are carried on on an individual basis, you remove the ability...
you remove the ability of the public to deal with those issues. We only have four areas where we can do that anyways, through our ethics commission, our inspector general, through, um, recall process, which is daunting in itself, and then also, um, and of course, the, the regular elections and criminal enforcement. So fix problems early on and don't get into the situation where we have to do more severe consequences.
Thank you. Okay. So that wraps that up? All right. Thank you very much. Um. Like nail the minutes.
I move to approve the April fourth, uh, adjusted minutes.
Is there a second?
We'll have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can add. Motion to approve payment of three Mississippi Engineering Development LLC in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for professional services in relation to the Aloha Turning Lane project.
I'll move to approve that payment.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion on this payment? We start off with you if you want.
You know what? I'm usually having some. Um, on this turn lane, I, I guess my, my concern, I go back to the point that we just completed Veterans Drive, which everybody I think knows it as East Aloha Drive. We renamed it Veterans Drive, the new road that connects Diamond Head Drive east to Aloha Drive to get to Rousas. We just completed it, so we probably should have gave it a chance to see how it's going to eliminate the traffic or alleviate or maybe reduce it. But, you know, we have twenty thousand in engineering fees, and we're fixing to approve seventy thousand for construction costs. We're ninety thousand in on the turn lane, and I, I just at this point can't approve it. We, we might shut away that.
Anybody else? My only thought on it is I voted against the project. For the simple reason that I don't think we need the turning lane to make a right-hand turn into the shopping center. There's no restriction there now. Uh, it could actually impede people coming out of the shopping center. I mean, and turning left into the shopping center by doing that. The right-hand turn lane coming out of the shopping center, I was fine with. I thought that was a good idea. But I didn't think it was necessary to do both. Uh, I think one of them is a wasted product. So for that reason, I was opposed, and I still am. So if there's nothing further.
Uh, can I, so are, are, when we vote on this, are you saying that we are not?